...19th, a special meeting to review some board policy. Will everyone please stand for the pledge? Ready? Yeah.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the great freedom and justice of the world.
Thank you. Spanish translation, Mr. Gonzalez? I don't -- oh, okay, I see Alma there. I don't know who's doing it.
Bienvenidos a la junta de la mesa directiva. Si necesitan traducción en español, por favor levanten la mano. Gracias.
Thank you.
Do have headsets for the hearing impaired, and there is no announcement on the screen to let someone know that. Is there any correspondence board members wish to share? Okay. Are there public comments? No? Maybe we will have some commenters during the actual review of the board policies. So we're on to our conference agenda. First reading of new board policies on mission, goals, and plans, Board Policy Series 0000. Dr. Sarvis?
Good. Our review of these policies is part of a comprehensive review of all board policies. As the board remembers, we went through the board meeting policies, and we're starting systematically through every policy in the district, starting with this 0000 series. By the way, the 1000 series is ready to go, too. We had spent time a year ago, a couple of board members had contributed their time, staff members spent their time going over these policies. Many of them are addressing ed code provisions so that the board and the district is well aware of what it needs to do in these areas. I've gone over this policy. As I go over these set of policies, as I go over these policies once again, I still see some areas that I think just as board members, I'm sure, will question whether we should say something in a little bit of a different way. If it's ed code language, then we need to be consistent with the ed code language. But we do want this to reflect what the board has in mind for setting its mission, its philosophy about the district, setting goals for the district, what the board has in mind for comprehensive plans, its nondiscrimination policies, its school plans and site councils, the school-based program coordination in the district, its policies for charter schools, policies for comprehensive plan for special education, safety plan, accountability, and that includes school accountability report card, and intervention for underperforming students. So the sequencing here follows the CSBA, California State Board -- School Board Association, thank you, guidelines. And in keeping with that, since we a year ago decided to bring in CSBA's policy review and alert system, it's important for us to maintain that same numbering and sequencing so that every time something comes through and we hear from CSBA that this ed code has changed and we need to review our policy in this area, that we can stay current on this. This is a good example of something that had been let go for years. Some of these policies date back to the '60s, some to the '70s. Some are policies that we have reviewed more recently, and just within the last couple of years, we already have policy language in place that addresses a number of these. But we need to be current on our policies, and we need to be rigorous in our pursuit of that currency. So we're asking the board to replace all of the old and existing policies on school-based coordination, charter schools, review and evaluation, and the Santa Barbara School District's annual report card. And you see a list of those policies. There are 1, 2, 3, 4 old policies already on the books. And consider the new policies that a number of us have reviewed and will be discussing today. And there are about a dozen of those policies in those areas that I had mentioned. So with that introduction, I'm hoping we can work our way through these policies within 1 hour 45 minutes.
Right, because we're going to adjourn at noon.
Yes. We do have another meeting later this afternoon.
Okay. I imagine board members have things tabbed, marked, whatever, that are discussion items. So we'll just go in numeric order. Board Policy 0000, mission. Any commenters?
Only, I'm just wondering when this mission was formalized. Was this in 1996? Is this the date on here, or was that done separately?
You mean our current mission?
Yes.
Our current mission is about that old.
It is that old. It was the last bit of strategic planning was done '96 through '98. Does that sound about right?
Yes. So if we adopted this policy, we would be revisiting our mission statement sometime very soon.
Well, I absolutely -- I mean, I've been requesting something like that on a number of occasions. Whenever we do our board focus goals, it always seems like we should be doing something before we get to the focus goals. So that was my question was, you know, can't -- if we, in the one, the line that begins, "The board shall review the district mission statements at least every five years or whenever a new board member or superintendent joins the district," that places a fairly heavy burden on the board. So I think we should look at that statement pretty carefully and see whether or not we would be able to fulfill that mission.
Could be every two years?
It could be every two years. That's exactly right.
Whereas I think maybe every 10 years makes more sense. Or, but then again, why would we want to be that regimented? We sort of want to do it when we want to do it, so.
Oh, see, I actually don't mind the every five years or whenever a new superintendent joins the district. But I think if it's whenever a new board member joins the district every two years, that it will become rote, we'll just end up rubber stamping whatever is in front of us and not really taking a look at it. I don't know if --
A new board member, I'd say I agree. I think that it didn't need to be done just because I've come on board.
Just for you, special for you.
Kate Parker is one of the few new board members who has read all of these policies.
Any other thoughts about the timing?
Well, I'm not sure what it means, first of all, to redo the mission statement, whether it's just a pro forma thing where we look at it and vote on it, or whether it would require, I mean, is this every five years require us to go out and to the community and ask them what they thought of our present board mission statement? I'm not too clear on what this all means.
Well, I don't think that it dictates those terms. I think that it can be, and that's what it was, it took place over a couple of years, and it was an all stakeholders sort of process. Or it could be a board review, or something in between. I mean, I don't know if there -- I didn't see anything in there that dictated the terms of how that review of the mission should take place, just that periodically that it should.
In fact, in some of the preliminary discussion, it revolved around not setting -- not providing a set course so that the board could decide based on the recency of the last review, for example, or whether this is something that would be better handled in this situation as a community-wide event, or something that the board would like to spend time on and workshop and have public hearings about. So we purposely didn't prescribe the activity.
Ms. Parker?
Well, I would be happy for us just to strike "board member or" from this language.
New board member or?
No, we want "new" to stay for new superintendent, but just board member or.
Okay, good.
Thank you. I'm very comfortable with that. And this is just a conference item today. I want to remind members of the public, I know there are a number of representatives from charter schools, and that's probably the mediest portion of what we'll be reviewing today. It's just on for discussion. We won't be voting. We're looking for input. So I'm glad you're here. Okay, should we move on to the next one? Oh, okay, this is our current mission statement that's attached to it.
Yes.
So obviously, we're not going to be tinkering with that today.
Right, and that's attached as an exhibit.
Okay, you're right. That's what the E stands for.
Right. But that would be in our policy packet, so that we do have this as part of policy. One thing that I have a bias about, and that is that we not have a lot of things outside of board policy and administrative regulations so that, oh, well, by the way, we have a guideline on that over here, and, oh, well, we do have a mission statement. No, it's not contained here, it's contained someplace else. I think it's very convenient and important to have those things in one place so we know how to operate, and we're not relying on some institutional memory about someone having a memo sometime somewhere. And that's happened all too often.
That's what happens in big organizations. So on to philosophy. Board Policy 0100A. Any comments?
I -- yeah, go ahead.
Dr. Noel?
No, I'll say mine.
Mine are just a couple of minor tweaks.
Okay.
In the second paragraph where it says, "It is the philosophy of the district to pursue excellence for all students and staff based on the philosophy that," it seems an excessive use of philosophy. So I would prefer that to be changed to either "belief that" or "based on the following."
How about "based on the following"?
"Based on the following." And then in the paragraph that's numbered 2, "Every student in the district, regardless of gender, special needs, or social, ethnic, language, or economic background," instead of the noun "language," having it be linguistic.
Linguistic, okay.
May I address that as well? Barbara Kiani pointed out to me that when we get later in these policy statements to Board Policy 0410 on nondiscrimination in district programs and activities, that's a different list of protected classes from this list. And I think this list should be expanded to include those protected classes as well.
Okay.
So were we taking out "language"? Was that?
Changing language to linguistic.
It's changing it from a noun to an adjective.
I'm having my normal choking session with the California School Board.
Turn on your mic.
With the California School Boards and Associations' computer that generates these texts. "A safe, orderly, and nurturing environment is necessary to promote learning." Is this a statement of philosophy? There is such a mix of statements in here. I'm not going to -- I just have to say this. I'm not proposing to rewrite this thing because, in my opinion, it was very poorly written in the first place. But that's somebody else when it comes to us. But it's not a -- many of these statements aren't, to me, what really kind of gets to the core philosophic posture of the schools. They don't say the basic things. And I just always find this very -- I don't have a solution short of -- I don't have, you know.
Well, we don't -- it's a conference agenda. We don't have to wordsmith it today. If there are deletions or additions that you would like to make, and some core statement that you think is critical.
My problem is I don't see anything really simple and, you know, short of -- a lot of it's just style, I think. It's just a lot of it's just style.
I understand.
You know what I mean?
I do.
A lot of it, you know, it gets to a point where the words almost get empty, there's so much of it. And I'm always troubled by this. But I'm troubled by this when I read a lot of educational documents.
Right.
You know, it's just on and on and on with the same stuff, and this doesn't kind of cut to the core of who we are from a philosophic position.
Right.
If we, I mean, if there is such a core, I believe there is.
Can I make a suggestion? That if we, at some point in the near future, do some kind of strategic review of our mission statement, that we come back to this statement of philosophy. It may be guided by any changes that we make to our mission statement. I agree with you. It's a lot of pap.
You said it.
There's nothing to dis-
You said it so much more efficiently than I did.
There's nothing to disagree with here. But there's also nothing to get excited about. So maybe that's the better course of action, is not to try and wordsmith it in the short term, but to deal with it as part of our examination of our mission statement.
Thank you.
Is that acceptable?
Thank you. That's exactly what I would have said had I been able.
Okay. Okay, so now we're on to Board Policy 0200, goals for the school district. And of course, it's a very brief statement, and it's connected to our board focus goals.
And attendant to that is an exhibit that has our most current board focus goals.
Okay, we'll just move on then.
Yep, yep. Again, we need -- I didn't see a schedule here or how we go about, at what point do we change it? What point do we evaluate them? Do we want to make it more regular, a springtime sort of thing? I guess I do want to make it a regular thing, although other things always seem to come up. But I guess it should be a yearly activity.
Well, it was originally intended to be, and it's been about every 18 months is how we've been going at it more recently. But I think it's a great goal to try and do it on an annual basis, even if it's just a review and a rollover of the focus goals. The annual review?
That it be put on the agenda at least one, sometime in the spring?
The timing is particularly difficult, depending on whether the goals target state test results, for example. State test results come out in August. If they target relative ranks from APIs which come out in March, whether they target the Title III AMAOs, the accountability goals, which come out in October, November. And so far, we've operated simply on the basis of whatever the most current data is, is the data that we're going to use. As you'll recall, this last year, we started this discussion about board focus goals in November. We went to a workshop in December, and we really didn't adopt these until later in the spring. And that slowed down the whole process. And I don't have a resolution to that quandary.
Any other suggestions from board members?
I would be happy to make it, just put in something like annual or yearly, as long as it's a goal and that we aren't -- there's some flexibility to it.
I'm looking, where would you put it? In that very first sentence, "Board shall adopt focus goals annually"?
Shall annually review and adopt focus goals?
I particularly like that because sometimes we run the risk of throwing out the old goals that we worked so hard on and starting all over with new goals. And in some cases, we've wanted to retain those goals as well.
Well, we retain the mega goal for a while.
Yes, we do.
But I think an annual review and allows flexibility to just, you know, review them and stick with them for another year. That's fine. Okay. Board Policy 0400, comprehensive plans. 0410, nondiscrimination in district programs and activities.
And this is a list of protected classes.
Okay. So this would be the--
Reflected in that number 2 under philosophy.
Thank you, okay.
Although I do notice that in this one, it does not mention language.
Language.
No, it does not.
So maybe we can add language into this one.
Okay.
Doesn't mention age either.
Well, I think we should add it.
Ageism is rampant in some parts of our society.
Are you wanting to include language here under 0410, or make sure that we retain it back in the philosophy number 2?
I think that they should probably be consistent.
Be consistent, yeah.
Okay.
Any other additions to that section? Then Board Policy 0420, school plans and site councils. No? Then the administrative regs that go with that, school plans and site councils. Laura?
Yeah, I have some questions about how site councils are chosen. This is on, let's see, AR 0420A? And I'm wondering whether we have the same rules at each school about how to choose parents, or how parents are -- choose themselves to be on site councils. I don't know how that's done, and I don't know if it's all the same.
I believe Mr. Gonzalez is probably closest to that, and maybe he could start.
The board policy follows existing education code language. Each of the represented groups in the school site council must be elected by their group, i.e., teachers must be elected by teachers, parents must be elected by parents at the secondary level, students must be elected by students. That is a compliance issue that we go through, and at this point, our schools are in compliance with that language. Also, I forgot to mention that other staff, for example, including classified staff, must be elected by classified staff. And so our school site councils do reflect that right now. Essentially, what that means is the days where a principal could tell parent X, "I'd like you to sit on the school site council," or teacher X, are gone. They have to be elected.
How about at the elementary school level?
Same thing.
So there's an election, every school has elections for site council members?
Yes. Now, I will share with you that some schools were delayed those elections, but they all are conforming to the processes that required.
And I think it's important to point out, too, that at some schools, there may not have been an election simply because when they put out the request for parents, they needed two parents, and only two parents said, "I'll do it." So I don't know that an election was held in that case because they -- yeah, yeah.
And if parents do not come forward and volunteer, what then happens?
The directions to the principals are, you are to, again, we've had occasions where principals have had to send a second and a third letter to the parent constituency asking for that election. But there is no such thing as a simple appointment. It's got to be an elected group. And we went through a CPM monitoring about that last year.
In reality, that's where leadership comes into play. You get people to turn out for this.
It's on a little different aspect of this problem, but is there some way that our administrative regulation?
Is your mic on?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm wondering if there's some way that our administrative regulation here could create a kind of a preliminary interaction between the board and site councils before they present single plans? The way it is now, it's sort of like you get them. And, you know, everything is a fait accompli, and there's a very, and there's very little time with, we have to cover so many in a meeting, very little time to delve into them. And I've always felt, and Jan and I have had this conversation, that while the site council has the ultimate say about what goes into it, that the board has to approve it, that providing some board guidance, say, you know, this is what the board's priorities are, and this is, you know, what the board is considering as a range of things to approve, that this would maybe make a little bit of a loop between the site councils and create better single plans.
I agree with you about closing the loop, but the timetable is really a critical portion in that school starts at the beginning of, you know, late August, beginning of September. Site councils generally don't even come together until the beginning of October. And then they're under their time constraints to not only be brought up to snuff on all of the requirements of what the site plan contains, but then to actually approve the budget on the site plan. And there's spillover from the previous year. Usually there's, it's a two-year term for a parent, is that correct? And they're usually staggered, or often staggered. I know that that's what happens at most junior highs and high schools, so that there are experienced members, but there are also new members. So there's this very intense process that takes place in October.
And do they get a training every year? I don't we, I guess, just recently, we had the first, that's a new practice, is it not?
I think Mr. Gonzalez would be able to--
The principals are obligated to provide trainings for all new members every single year. The district staff also provides training. I will share with you that the lead document that the board approves, i.e. the LEAP plan, is the basis for the plans that the schools submit. That document and the board's input in that document is what sets up the school site council priorities. And perhaps focus should be made to make sure that early on, the board has a draft to that document and can provide input and revisions. I want to echo what the superintendent and what the board president has said. It would probably be very difficult to present these plans any earlier than we're doing. It can be done, but it would pose a considerable hardship on school staff to do that.
And we're the, we're up to date now with the LEAP documents, with the local agency plans? So they all have a current LEAP when they then start holding their meetings?
Right, and the LEAP has to be approved every June. So you see that early, and everything in the single plans have to be in alignment with that LEAP, so the--
Well, that's, that also, I want to commend staff because that has not always been the case, and that maybe filled in the gap that I'm looking for.
Although, Dr. Noel, I suppose one way to attack the problem would be to have, to put together a cover letter that lays out the charge of, you know, the site council with a direction from a LEAP that comes to, you know, them sitting down and put together their site plan, and the board would review that cover letter, then that would be distributed at the start of each school year. And I suppose that's one way.
They also, presumably, they all take into account the focus goals.
Right.
Also, if I could suggest, as a way of communication, all of the process of a school site council developing their plan and their budget is based on input from subcommittees of that school site council, bringing the data forward from DLEC, from GATE, from all of the different constituencies that then make up the school site council. Perhaps the minutes of each of those school site council meetings ought to be published somewhere so that the board could review some of that or see progress if they were And you could see the process as it unfolds.
And you could see the process, uh, as it unfolds in the minutes for the site councils, and how the plan comes together.
The, a, a related part of this, a concern I've had about site councils is, uh, varying amounts of expertise that's available to them. And, uh, and I know you've done something along those lines, too, but could you, could you refresh my memory on that?
You mean by way of training?
Well, so, so, I'm sitting here on a site council, and, you know, and I just came from, from, uh, from my job, and someone says, "Uh, you must do this, and it must be based on research-based findings." These are research proven, proven by research. I don't read this research. Who, who is the, who's the, the oracle for, for the site council? Who, who represents that body of expertise that, that the leg, the law and, and everything assumes that they have at their disposal? And it, it just seems to me, I, I understand the principal, the, the ones I've gone to, the principal is the person. Do we, do we provide that in any institutional way? You know, does, like, David, does Davis Hayden meet with the site councils, help them understand those data? Uh, or do we provide someone who's kind of in touch with, uh, the, kind of current best practices? The thing, things that work in the classroom. Uh, I mean, this is, you know, this is no longer kind of advanced rocket science, this stuff is pretty routine stuff now in, in, in the education literature. Are we getting that into, to their hands in a way that they can use it and incorporate it into their, into their plans?
Uh, I'd say, I think this is the same with secondary as elementary, the principal is the key person involved here. But the principal gets that type of information and, and the resources from our principal meetings, we, we have people such, like, like Davis and Michael and Cynthia, people come in and share that kind of research. We also are really trying to focus our meetings as a professional development opportunity for principals. Our meetings look very different than they used to, um, where there might be two or three agenda items, and a lot of it is about this kind of thing. It's not the twenty agenda item kind of meeting where it's just stuff that can be done in a written form. So, it's, it's handled through our offices, and we bring in resources, we work with UCSB, we, you know, there's lots of different, um, resources to help with that type of, um, question, that can then be transferred to the site councils. Site councils have also been bringing in additional resources, having speakers come from these different places, having Davis Hayden come and speak to the group, Michael and Cynthia. So they're taking advantage of everything we can, you know, broker in for them.
Further, um, besides the principal meetings, we also have LEAP committees, where we have representatives from English Language Arts and Mathematics from each of the schools. They meet on a regular basis. Uh, and it's in those meetings that they review research findings, they have speakers that come in and talk to them. We bring people and researchers from UCSB, uh, and from across the country sometimes, uh, which we've had. Uh, and that's a new process for us now. And we're finding that the people that come to that LEAP committee meeting can then go back to the site councils and bring more expertise and share more than they ever have before. So it's not, uh, a matter of, uh, Dr. Noel coming from work, sitting down and, and looking around going, "Uh-oh, I don't know anything about this." Well, now there's people on that council that can help, uh, to inform of the process.
If I could add one point to that, um, the fourth Monday of each month with the secondary folks, this is the mechanism we've been able to set up. We meet with all the Title I, English Learner Development, Math LEAP, Math English Art Coordinators, uh, in the room next door. And we present to them, uh, best practices and all of those things that Assistant Superintendent Zettel mentioned to you folks. Now, we are, uh, anxious to set up a similar kind of mechanism with our elementary principals. We have not yet found a, a good vehicle to do that, but we have begun to implement at the secondary level, uh, the kinds of mechanisms that, uh, Dr. Noel, you may be interested in. One last example, this next Monday, for example, we'll be showcasing some best practice, state-of-the-art uses for Title III, and you're all invited to attend that. You will see what the State Department believes is the most significant ways to effectively utilize Title III, uh, funding for English learners. Those meetings begin about eight o'clock.
I, I don't know if any of that satisfies you, Dr. Noel.
It satisfies me.
Okay. Good, good.
Well, let me just add that we also have a considerable amount of sharing of research articles, uh, that get shared in principals' meetings and the, uh, management meetings here in the district office, and, and just on a send-out basis, and, and comment about what's partic- what we see as being particularly important in those. By the way, just as an example, uh, the statements about a safe and orderly school environment being a necessary foundation for, for high levels of learning is very consistent in the effective schools' research. Uh, it comes out in best practices, it, it gets stated, uh, just about everywhere.
Um, I just have a quick comment on this administrative regulation. I just want to point out number five, the typo, that that lowercase i gets switched.
Got it, thank you.
Finally got a replacement for Claire on the board.
I was gonna say, Mrs. Van Blercom speaks. Okay, we are on to board policy, uh, zero four two zero point one, school-based program coordination. Comments? Staff? No? Nope, okay. The, now we are on to a biggie, uh, board policy zero four two zero point four, charter schools. The board policy itself is fairly brief, it's the administrative regs that are extremely lengthy. Uh, any comments on, on the board policy itself? Okay, well then we will move on to the administrative regs, zero four two zero point four, charter schools.
Was that, was that oh four two oh point four?
Point four, yes. I'm looking at this, shall we go, um, section by section? And at the, uh, oh, zero point four, at the close of each section, see if there's any comment from our charter school representatives or other members of the public who are here?
I, I would just make one thing back, just back onto the BP.
Mm-hmm.
I wouldn't mind, uh, seeing this reference to legislative intent, uh, in the Basic Charter School Act.
Okay. Did you get that?
I'm sorry.
Referencing the, the, the Basic Charter School legislation at the bottom of the board policy.
At the bottom of the policy itself.
So you want, you want to see the ed code citations, is that it, Dr. Noel?
Yeah, I'm just looking to see if that, uh, I can't remember that section number. Six oh-
Oh, flip the, flip the page, Dr. Noel, it's on the back.
I, I believe it's contained all on the next page.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just still not seeing the, the one that's leaping off the page at me. But anyway, I can get it for you if you want. So it's, it's the basic, it's just-
The basic, I know what you're talking about.
I think it's like in the first paragraph of the, of the first section of the, of the Charter School Act.
And it lays out what it needs to contain?
Yeah.
Okay.
Are you thinking that you want that, want to make sure that reference is in this list, or do you want a separate statement about that reference?
I would, I would reference it in, you know, textually.
Textually.
I mean, uh, yeah, I didn't, I don't know whether it'd be necessary to go so far as to quote it, but, uh, that board policy is consistent with legislative intent, as expressed in blah, 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 blah.
Got it. Okay. Easy to do. Okay, so back to the administrative regs. Uh, and unfortunately, the pages aren't numbered, um, which I think is gonna make this-
Uh, we can number the pages.
Well, for purposes of this discussion, but let's, let's forge ahead, let's do the best we can. Actually, if we number as we go, maybe that will make it easier. So, on the first page of administrative regs, zero four two zero point four, any comments?
I have a question about that legislative reference. Dr. Noel, where do you see that fitting? So after the first paragraph?
Yeah.
Okay, under, like, where it says district operation on the first page?
Pretty much where it expresses the, and, and the legislative reference that I, that I have in mind is, where's the effect that the, that the legislature sees charter schools as an integral part of the California Public Education System?
Right.
With, it's, it's like one sentence or two sentences.
I've read it before, right.
You've read that, I'm sure.
Yes. So do you see that being the very first part? I'm just, I'm just taking notes, I'm trying to-
Somehow just that first paragraph, it's the same to me, yeah.
Okay.
Of the board policy?
Yeah, of the policy.
Oh, the policy, okay.
Right.
The policy, oh, not the AR.
I'm sorry, I thought we were-
Board policy.
It's also you're taking your notes, you're in the right spot here, right?
Right, okay, good, thank you.
Could you, could you state the intent again, so that I'm sure that I've got the language and can find it, and, you just said it so nicely.
I did?
Yes.
You just, um, you quoted it.
What did I say? Did you play? It's, that, that charter school should be viewed as an integral part of the, of the California Public Ed- Education System, I know that's one part of it, there's a little bit more that comes after that. It may even say, there's a part of that in there, it talks about competition, I think. And I'm not sure if that may be in another section, I just, you know, I've, I've been working with this stuff, but I don't remember it. You're testing me, and I'm failing the quiz.
Thank you.
Uh, okay, so we're on page one of the administrative regs, any comments?
Well, you know, these seem like, I mean, this is right out of the statute.
It's, it's just about straight out of the statute, and I, I actually, my question for, uh, Dr. Sarvis was, did, uh, did Paul Mini review this at all?
In fact, I believe we've already adopted much of this language, uh, in our review of, uh, the charters just two and a half years ago-
Right.
And the MOUs.
It's dated 2004, yeah.
Yes.
So it's been looked at fairly recently.
I will check to see that we have his review as well.
Okay. I do, I have one question about the first page. And that, and you may not be able to answer this. In the first full paragraph, under petition signatures, um, it uses the word meaningfully, meaningfully interested in having his or her child, or for a teacher, meaningfully interested in, in teaching at that school. Is there any legal explanation of meaningful?
No, I believe, uh, my review of the, um, of the code language, it is simply that.
Okay.
Or, uh, to my mind, it's, uh, any student who is potentially, or parent who would like to-
Enroll their child, okay.
And that's what meaningfully is-
Okay.
If, if they are willing to put their name down.
Okay.
And I think it makes it clear with the, with, that that needs to be a part of their statement as they're signing it, that it's not something that says, "There's absolutely no obligation," it's one that says, "You have to have meaningful intent." So, I guess every person gets to decide what that means for themselves.
Okay. Then, shall we just stop along the way if people have questions or comments? If people could number as they're turning pages, so that we have some idea of what page we're on?
Uh, on the top of the, uh, of the first AR zero four two zero point four A, we do have a description of the districts. The elementary district is grades kindergarten through six, the Santa Barbara High School District is grades seven through twelve. We have since discovered that the elementary district is, uh, apparently chartered as a kindergarten-through-eight district, and that the secondary district is apparently chartered as a kindergarten-through-adult district. But we will do further research on this, and we'll bring it back to you.
You mean, you're talking about back into the nineteenth century?
Yes. It's been that way. Apparently so, it's, it's on the books-
It's like that easement across my property.
Yes. It's on the books with the CDE, at least in, uh, in the area of, um, oh gosh, what's the name of the book called? That, that's essentially the address and phone number book. The state directory, thank you.
The school directory.
And that's the school directory that contains all the CDS codes for all of the schools and districts across California.
But they, you know, I mean, this is, this is, this is profound.
It is profound, yes. And that's why I bring it up to you today.
I look at, at Mr. Gonzalez, the, uh, we, we closed down the sixth grade at La Cumbre Junior High School, uh, because, because we were directing money from the secondary to the elementary district. And according to this, that was not, that was unnecessary. A major policy move like that.
I don't know if that was unnecessary. To my mind, I think there's a big question about what happens to the base revenue limit if sixth-grade students are served in the secondary district? For example, what if in the secondary district, uh, we included, uh, all of our charters, all of our preschool programs, since it's, uh, oh no, I'm sorry, it's kindergarten-through-adult, not preschool programs, uh, but various other programs? Would that change the base revenue limit for all students in the secondary district? And it would, would it reduce it to something like a unified, uh, base revenue limit? I mean, I, I think we're treading on thin ice there. And, back when we created La Cumbre Middle School, we continued to serve, I love this construction. But it hasn't changed our productivity here, I want you to know. We continued to serve the sixth-grade students out of the elementary district, and we did so for some reason. And, uh, I've, I've asked, uh, Mr. Gonzalez to, to help me remember, uh, what all the reasons were for us bringing that back to the, to the elementary schools, and they, well, I'll let him reiterate that. But why those students weren't served in the secondary district is a mystery to me, there must have been some reason. Uh, you know, we do have-
You're talking about what, what year?
When it-
When they created the, the-
When they created the middle school. Now, we do have at, uh, at Santa Barbara Charter, uh, we have a K-five school and a six-eight school. We have at OAS, a K-eight program, and we serve the seventh, eighth-grade students in the elementary district. Well, these are all important questions.
But I thought that, at, at Santa Barbara Charter School, I believe they have two charters, one issued by the secondary district.
Santa Barbara Charter School does have two charters.
That was, uh, that was the superintendent at the time, for, for reasons, I never got an explanation, but decided to take, to issue the second charter, the, you know, the-
Yes.
Seven-eight charter, as, through the, through the high school district.
Well, I think Dave Wiseman could also speak to that, uh, if we wanted him to. I, I believe they were even advised by the state to, uh, Dave, could you please come up to the mic here? Uh, to submit two charter petitions, and they've suffered ever since because of it.
Yeah, thanks. Um, hi, everybody, as you know, we, we do have a single K-eight charter school, but it is chartered through both the elementary and the secondary district. At the time, and this is a little bit of hearsay, because I don't know personally all of the machinations that went through, uh, coming up with the second charter, but what we were told was that the state told the administrative staff here that they wanted to have the second charter due to, due to the dual district characteristic that we have here in Santa Barbara, which is the last one in the state of California. Then, the superintendent asked us to process a second charter for our secondary school, but it was an identical charter document to our elementary charter. So they were actually the same document. Also, I wanted to point out that, um, although it's not explicit in the administrative regulations, the law does allow for the elementary district to charter a K-eight charter, even if the elementary district was simply K-five, as long as the charter covered grades that were in that elementary district. So, um, our second charter turned out to be unnecessary. Now, the other side of that is that Proposition Thirty-nine creates some real complicated issues, where you have two districts under the same board and administration with two distinct boundaries. Because to be within the secondary boundaries, obviously is very different and much larger than the elementary boundaries. Because to be within the secondary boundaries, obviously, is very different and much larger than the elementary boundaries. And because we're not actually 100% unfolded into the Prop. 39 system, this also has not become an important consideration for us. But because it could be, we've always retained the two charters so that we could consider that we had kids coming from inside the secondary district boundaries, as well as the elementary. The problem comes when the state gets all of our materials and thinks of us as two separate schools. A K-5 school and a 6'8" school, in two separate districts. This creates a bad misimpression on the part of the state people. It also creates really complicated budgetary entanglements because the two budgets for the secondary and the elementary are not completely succinct and separate. Therefore, they're constantly mixed. And when the state gets that information, it's too much for them to handle. So they basically go, "What's going on here? What's going on here?" And then there's transfers from one district to the second other district, and that's very, very confusing for them. So the last time we visited the State Commission on Charter Schools, they said, "Next time you come to us, bring us one charter." But so far, we haven't found that that's really in the best interest of our charter school and consistent with what is going on with our district, where we haven't fully unified the district and the single district proposition still retains the dual district characteristic of our system.
This, thank you, Dave. This whole discussion was occasioned by a number of issues and questions that Kate Parker had asked. And I'd like to thank her for that, publicly thank her for that, because these are important issues for us and have a lot to do with funding, with serving students in the different districts, and our future in a number of areas, as well as the charter schools. And I realize we're just dealing with the charter AR here, but we'll bring you more information on the rest of this at a later point.
Thanks.
Any other, moving forward through this, any other, any other questions or comments about this? I mean, as we've said before, it pretty closely reflects charter school legislation. I had a clarification question. And that is on 0420.4J. It's just a single page. Fortunately, there aren't multiples of it. The paragraph under number 11, it says, "Teachers in charter schools shall hold a commission on teacher credentialing certificate, permit, or other document equivalent to that which a teacher and other public schools would be required to hold." So if they were teaching some odd specialty class, not a core class, all they need is some document from the CTCC. But if they're teaching in a core class, they obviously need to meet the requirements of no child left behind as highly qualified teacher.
That's right. Well, the credentialing requirements for charters are different, yes.
Okay, thank you, okay. Any other questions? Staff or board members, issues?
I misunderstood your point, I guess.
Well, if they're teaching a core class, they have to be considered highly qualified teachers under no child left behind.
Yes.
But if they're not teaching a core class, what really is required? That's what it sounded like to me, that they still needed something from CTCC saying that they were rubber stamped, that they...
This is, this is, this is clear in the statute. Again, I...
Okay.
I don't have it on...
And then, well, then maybe we need to go...
I think it's clear in the statute. Didn't I, when I made my presentation, was I pretty, I think I made a very positive statement that if you're not teaching core classes, you don't need a credential.
Well, you need a teaching credential.
What?
You need a teaching credential, but you don't need that subject-specific credential, correct?
Then I, then I don't understand that.
Right. That was, that was why I brought this up, because I wasn't understanding, based on what you said, it seemed to be in conflict here.
Then I don't either.
Okay.
Because I did not understand what Dr. Sarvis just said.
It sounds like...
Well, then, let's check it out. We'll check it out.
Yeah, I certainly have to.
Yeah. I mean, it sounds like they need an undergraduate degree and that they would have to take the C-Best and get at least an emergency credential. That's what it looks like here to me. Yeah. You need to come up to the microphone.
I'm sorry, was that all right for me to invite Dave?
No, no, absolutely. He's a charter expert.
One applicant, actually, who does not have a full credential, but he's got a single subject credential, which I think leaves a...
I think it would work, yeah.
Herefore, we've always worked on the premise that for non-core subjects, the charter school law enabled us to use people without teaching credentials.
Without any teaching credential.
Including an emergency teaching credential.
Okay.
I mean, including without emergency training.
Without an emergency credential, correct?
That's my understanding too, David.
Correct. Now, for core teachers, we are subject to not only the credential requirements, but also the NCLB requirements.
Right, highly qualified requirements, right.
Right. But for non-core subjects, one of the critical flexibilities that have been allowed in charter schools is that you can use professionals from the field who don't have a teaching credential. And that's been very important and something that we would prefer to retain.
Well, I thought they needed to satisfy some base level credentialing, and I may be wrong.
I thought it was a TB test and a...
TB test and fingerprints, right?
And fingerprints, right. Background check.
That's not, that's not the base level I had in mind.
I'm encountering it right now, that some people, some people who are, teach apprenticeship programs and construction unions, and they say, "Well, we've got, we have credentials." But somehow, they use a language that makes it sound like it may not be from the California Commission on Teaching Credentials. And I'm trying to sort that through, whether, whether there's another credentialing agency for technical people. Do you know, David?
I don't. But again, I would say that that flexibility is something that charter schools would seek to preserve as much as possible for non-core subjects.
Well, it sounds like maybe a simple phone call to Paul Mini would clear this up. And then we would come back to change the language to reflect that. Okay.
Thanks.
Ms. Parker?
Moving a little bit forward in this section on 0420.4M. Just at the bottom, it's going back and forth with mentioning 80 units in district, and sometimes it doesn't mention again. So the very last sentence on that, "Facilities request based upon projections of fewer than 80 units." I think it should be 80 in-district units of average daily classroom attendance for the year may be denied by the district.
I think you're right.
It is in district. Units.
Okay.
But, you know, maybe we need some kind of a caveat on this thing. Because, well, how many more are there like that, that Ms. Parker just found that we haven't found? But they're in the code. And the code rules. You know, if the CSBA or we have missed something, there's still a default, namely, the education code.
Well, so true. And the ed code is rather lengthy. This is designed to spell out in simpler fashion what the district should be doing. But it isn't in no way designed to supersede the ed code. I mean, the ed code is still the authority on this.
But...
I'd like to see, I think we ought to put that on there some...
Isn't the ed code, couldn't it be that the ed code is more, if the ed code said you can deny if you have fewer than 80 in district, couldn't we say, actually, we'll permit, we will provide facilities for more than 80? Couldn't we be saying that if we're not careful? If you see what I'm saying? They're giving, well, if they give a minimum, this is your, this is the bare minimum. If they have less than 80, if you're than 80 students, then you can say no. And, but couldn't we have our own policy that says, they say fewer than 80, we won't be more restrictive than that, but we can be less restrictive?
Yes.
Right.
So we need to be careful
Right.
that it doesn't say just 80 students, that it's 80 in-district students.
Right. Okay. Okay, so we're up to M. Any, any other? Were there any comments that our two charter principals or head teachers would like to make at this point? Okay. Is that really it? Okay. So then, okay, last call, charter schools. Going, going. Okay. We'll be back. We'll be back. We're just, it's just a conference item. The next board policy is 0430, "A Comprehensive Local Plan for Special Education." And the note that I have written here is, has this been reviewed by Joanne Pulley?
And I believe it has.
She assured me that she would go over this. She's at actually a special ed institute. And she told me she would go over this. She would pull out and give me anything that she had any questions about or thought would be confusing. And I did not receive anything from her. So I assume, I haven't called her to check, but I assume that she would follow through on that.
So it was, it's board policy 0430 and the administrative regs that go along with it. Any board questions, comments, input?
Yes, I have, I am bubbling over with one big statement. How do we make sure that these policies preclude the possibilities of the kinds of lawsuits that we've... How can we really get on top of that? How can we get so proactive that maybe we err on the other side, but we don't get hit like we have been? And I, how to operationalize that, haven't got the foggiest idea.
Well, I believe that as part of the set of board focus goals, and part of the plan was very directly to monitor, provide training. I mean, we could have a major board discussion about that, or even minor board discussion about that.
How about, I've often suggested that we need an ombudsman in the loop here. If not an ombudsman, almost like a, what do you call a person who looks over something on its legal merit and says, "You're vulnerable, you're not vulnerable."
Risk manager.
Risk, yes, 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 yes. You know, I mean, it costs us money to do this, but nothing like what it costs when you run the wrong side of a lawsuit.
I know that Joanne Pulley has started the group that involves parents and community members to meet together on a fairly regular basis. She's restarted that group again. She also has been involved with planning lots and lots of training of staff and just really making very clear the kinds of practices that may or may not have happened, you know, even just not understanding that allowing this or allowing that or not following this could lead to a lawsuit and the rights of the parents and the kids. And she's just really trying to, you know, proactively train all staff. And if there are cases that seem like they might have some issues that are, could lead to something like that, she makes sure that either she or her two district coordinators are present at the IEPs. So she's really trying to, you know, train and an understanding be out there with parents and community and her staff.
I've been very impressed with her presentations and have the feeling that she, better than any I've seen in my experience, is able to see our vulnerabilities. I still would have a lot of, a lot more confidence if we had someone with an adversarial eye looking at it. Someone who doesn't live here, but lives outside and says, hey, you know, the, almost the equivalent of a special ed chaser. You know, someone who says, "There's money in this suit."
There is money in this.
You know, and we need to know that before they learn that. So we can fix the problem.
At this point in time, we have no outstanding procedural cases. However, I don't think we're agendized for that discussion, so I think we should move it to some other format or some other venue.
Then I take back everything I said.
Thank you for saying it, though.
I just have a quick question about the acronym FAP that's referred to several times.
Oh, that needs to be spelled out.
Free and Appropriate Public Education.
Okay, because at the top it says Free and Appropriate Education, and I wasn't sure if there was missing a public there or not.
It is missing a public. Thank you.
Oh, okay, because it's in the board policy, it's not in the regs. Okay.
Okay.
Got it. Okay.
Yeah, first line.
Okay. I don't know, Ms. Parker, I think you may have found your calling. Our official editor. Okay. Then we are on to board policy 0450, "Comprehensive Safety Plan."
I just had one note on this, and that is down at the bottom of the sheet where it says, "The board shall approve the plan at a regularly scheduled meeting, and the adoption of the plan shall not be a consent item. At a minimum, the board shall discuss both of the following. One, how the safety plan addresses the needs of each school and students within that school." I'm wondering if we should be including the staff in this plan as well. Employee safety, and not just student safety.
It's a, I do believe, though, that's a different set of policies. Is that correct?
I don't know.
Because, I mean, there's a lot of interface here. We just approved disaster preparedness at our last board meeting, and it was a completely different series number.
Yes.
You are correct, Board President. You're referring to BP and AR 3516. I have reviewed that wording, and it is consistent with the existing policy that you're reviewing at the present time. I will have to do a bit of research and find out, are we indeed duplicating? And I'm not prepared to answer that question to you folks right now.
I didn't see this one as a duplication. I guess the question is, is there something in board policy or administrative regs that covers employee safety? Is the question raised by Ms. Parker.
Yes.
And actually, I do think this interfaces nicely with the board policy that we just approved. And it's not, it's not a duplication, merely an interface, yeah.
There is more language on employee safety, however, inserting employees here, I don't think poses any problem.
Well, I guess my question is, do we get two safety plans? Do we get a safety plan that just deals with employees? Do we get a safety plan that just deals with school and students?
No, we don't.
If it's one safety plan...
It says comprehensive.
One safety plan, yes.
But I think we need to check and make sure that there isn't some other policy floating around. And if there is, it needs to be integrated into one, right? Okay. I actually had a question about the administrative regulations. It lists a lot of people who need to see the plan, or the plan needs to be vetted through them. The mayor. The local mayor, you know, that sort of thing. Do we actually do that, or is it? Go ahead, Mr. Gonzalez.
Up to this point, we have not done that. The revisions of the safe school plans will be presented to you in February does include that language. What we've shared with the principals, it is our hope that we can invite those respective groups to the board meeting and have them reviewed, have these documents reviewed by all the required folks at one time to ask our 23 schools to contact the mayor's office. Period. Thank you.
Thank you. I think that was why I raised. So we would make some kind of coordinated effort. Thank you, I appreciate that, Mr. Gonzalez.
And please note that our language here is permissive. We may.
Okay. Any other, any other questions or comments?
Did you want to suggest specific changes to this?
It was merely questioning the practicality of... It was, it was merely questioning the, the practicality of individual schools going through this exercise.
I'm sorry, the mayor actually is shall.
It's shall.
Here, I was looking at the, the may notify representative of local churches, local civic leaders, local business organizations, but you're right.
And there's nothing wrong with shall. It's simply that it should be a coordinated effort through the district and not a burden on individual schools. Okay.
We'll check to see if the ed code really says shall.
Okay.
I, I don't actually see here the police department, and shouldn't they be the ones that we want to talk to?
Isn't that the issue?
You know, our primary contacts are with the, the fire chief and with police department and...
Right, right.
But do we see them on here? Did I miss them? No?
It doesn't have, you know, county emergency preparedness, you know? I mean, there is a, there's a county office of...
Emergency preparedness.
Preparedness, right, okay, yeah.
Office of Emergency Services.
Right.
Maybe that falls under local civic leaders?
City and county, right. We need to be able to cover both, right.
If I may point out...
And city of Goleeda as well, yeah. So more than one mayor.
The board policy, the board policy and ARs that you did pass do include cooperation with state and local agencies, including those agencies you've mentioned. Okay?
Do you mean those are contained in here, or those are separate?
They're contained in, in AR 3516 that was passed by the board. That does include that language. And the ed code does require that kind of cooperation.
I have to, I have to say, it always worries me when we have policies in different places.
Right.
May I ask that we be allowed time to consider either pulling these policies into that or pulling those policies into this, wherever we think it might be most appropriate, so that it's very clear what the overarching scope of this is and what all the requirements are, all in one place?
Because it seems at this point that disasters and just day-to-day safety are being considered quite differently.
Right.
Yes.
Right. And, and it actually references a number of other board policies having to do with campus security, risk management, vandalism. So, I mean, I would agree with Ms. Parker. I think we are talking about two different things. I mean, there may be the necessity for two different plans, but you, you certainly need to reference each one.
Yes. And as we plan site by site for emergency preparedness, disaster, disaster recovery, I mean, we, we're constantly preparing for all sorts of things. It's, it was a long time ago that we had just had fire drills.
Right.
And then that we just had fire drills and duck and cover drills. Now we're preparing for shooters on campus. We're preparing for all sorts of, of possible scenarios. And our safety plans need to be comprehensive. Of course, they're comprehensive by, by ed code and will be by policy, but it's always been difficult for sites to see the full range, the full scope of, of those elements, so that they address all of those needs in one place. We need to do the same. Thank you.
Okay. So, well, at least for the time being, comprehensive safety plan. We will move on to board policy 0500, accountability. It's pretty clear, yeah.
About a buck stops here, sort of a sign.
Okay. Board policy 0510, school accountability report card. My only question about this one is that it calls for the annual issuance. And now that we have them up and running, are they reviewed on an annual basis?
Yes.
Okay.
Barbara, could you, could you please address that?
We do, we are reviewing the SARC. We're about a year behind, I believe, in terms of the ones that we have on the web. We're looking at 0506, for example. But yes, we are maintaining them and posting them as quickly as we're getting that information.
Well, let me also say, though, that the state information runs a year behind anyway, and we don't get the state update. Well, it used to be November, and November was our start date to add in the other information so that we could post new ones. But by posting new ones, it meant that we were actually posting a school accountability report card for the previous year. So we've always been a year behind. We'll probably never get beyond that unless the state can move up their timelines.
Can I, can I ask a question?
Yes.
On, on the website or on the actual paper copies, when they're, when they're reissued or when it's revised, can we put an acknowledgement right at the top saying that these are based on state figures that run a year behind? You know, essentially, we're aware that this is not dated for the current school year.
Yes.
But we're entirely limited by state information. I always love getting emails from, from parents saying, you know, "I want to look at the, the school accountability report card, and darn, it's not even up to date."
Right.
So, I mean, I, I'm wondering if there should be an acknowledgement of some kind.
We can do something like that. I'll take a look at it, the language, and see if we can improve it for clarity.
Yeah.
So that people understand that, you know, this is...
You're right.
Well, that we're not behind the curve, you know?
Correct.
You're right. Just putting the date, 200506, gives the impression that we're just late.
We're asleep at the wheel, yeah, okay. Okay. We bypassed board policy 0500, Dr. Noel. It's called, it's titled accountability, and I just want to make sure that if you had something to offer, you had the opportunity. We didn't make any changes at all.
Thank you.
Okay. So then we are on to board policy 0520, intervention for underperforming schools. I didn't have any questions about the actual board policy language, but I'm wondering if, as a district, we have any interest in coming up with any administrative regulations that go along with the policy.
Can we get an explanation for what does it mean to be part of the State's II slash USP program anymore?
Right.
Right.
Since they pulled the funding.
Right, it's high priority grant program.
And let's talk about the status of that, if we may have Mr. Gonzalez.
Dr. Noel, thank you. We put in a call to CDE. They've not yet returned our phone calls. But we believe that IIUSP may not exist as a program at the present time. There is the Office of High Priority Intervention Programs, but I would advise us not to delete this section of the BP till we've gotten word from CDE about how to proceed. But I think you're correct. The program no longer exists. We've only had one school within our district that entered this program and successfully exited, and that was La Cumbre a number of years ago.
And got a couple hundred thousand dollars.
We received over $300,000, right.
And by the way, they exited just after they became a program improvement school, and we got a congratulatory letter from the state saying, "You have successfully completed your IIUSP requirements. You're now a successful school," just after we received a letter saying, "You are a program improvement school." Different accountability models, yes.
So any other comments regarding intervention for underperforming schools? It sounds like we are waiting for some feedback.
Well, I just wish they put the money back in the program.
Yeah.
And NCLB punishes, tries to change behavior by punishment. This program tried to change behavior by rewards. There's something, there's some research behind that, you know?
Okay. Well, wow, that was incredibly efficient. Thank you, thank you, everyone.
How'd we get there, so far?
I know, we did get there quickly.
Well, I dig out the 1,000 series.
It awaits, it awaits. There's more. I, I don't know if you want to give us a quick preview of, of future board policy series that we...
No, I, I think we'd better stick with this. In fact, we got enough assignments out of this
Okay.
that it'll take us a little while to do the homework on this, bring this back to the board for your, your possible action, and of course, if there are other changes at that point in time, you're welcome to suggest those changes as well.
Great.
So we'll be bringing this back. I, well, I don't know yet. We'll schedule this on the future agenda items to give you some idea of when we think we'll have this ready.
We await them eagerly, and thank you to our charter school representatives for, for coming. And we will adjourn. We will be meeting again at 1:30 in our joint city council school board meeting. Is it 1:30 or 1?
1:30.
So?